Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of December 8, 2008. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with the review of its
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Grumney?
Here.
Commissioner Lund?
Here.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comments and I do not have any public comment cards unless there's someone in the audience who would like to speak under public comments, not the items on the agenda, but anything else. Okay? We'll go on to written comments, announcements, continuance. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to mention that Case 6A, the applicant has requested a continuance of that item to a date uncertain. That is the Gekel case on Corinne Hill Court. And so staff recommends continuing that as requested by the applicant. And secondly, Case 6B, the applicant has withdrawn that application. Therefore, staff would recommend as well, obviously, that you do not hear that at this time. That case will not be coming back to you, but instead has been fully withdrawn from commission consideration. That's all I had at this time. Also, I wanted to mention that there is a supplemental packet this evening containing a letter with regard to Case 6C, the special use permit that you will be considering in a moment with concerns about that project. This is from a resident who had submitted other letters which are also included in your packet on pages 24 and 25. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk please open Case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding Case PPD 2007 70714 and OTP 2008 70297. The applicant is Wendy Gekel. The appellant is Mary Wilson. The request is to consider a referral from the City Council of a revised plan for the construction of a single-family detached dwelling to allow the removal of two oak trees and encroachment into the protected zones of five oak trees. It's located at 349 Corinne Hill Court and the recommendation is to continue to a date uncertain.
Is there a motion to continue? Commissioner Fisher?
Motion to continue Case 6A to a date uncertain.
Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We'll go on to Case 6C then. Will the clerk please open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6C regarding Case SUP 2008 70325. The applicant is Miller Brothers DVR Town Center LLC. The request is to allow outdoor entertainment consisting of live music on Friday or Saturday evenings from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. and Saturday or Sunday afternoons from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. and movie nights on Thursdays from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. It is located at 330 Via Las Brisas and the recommendation is to approve with conditions.
Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Chua and Mr. Smith. Mr. Chua, if you'd like to give the staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Reynolds, members of the commission. For your consideration tonight is SUP 2008 70325 requesting to allow live entertainment and movie showings at the Dos Vientos Shopping Center. The live band performance would be held twice a week year-round. It will be on Fridays or Saturday evenings, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. and Saturday or Sunday afternoons between 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. The outdoor movie showing would be shown once a month during the month of September through June until 9:00 p.m. and on a weekly basis, or once a week during the months of July and August, not later than 10:00 p.m. This is the aerial photo for the project location and I'm hovering the pointer over to the area where the amphitheater is located. As you see, it's on the corner of Via Las Brisas and Via Rio side of the property. It is a categorical exemption one under SEQA. It is a minor change in the operation of a commercial center. The live entertainment would be held at the center's amphitheater, which I pointed out earlier, at the corner of Via Rio and Via Las Brisas. The amphitheater was approved as part of the Dos Vientos Town Center under DP 2001 775, the purpose of which is to provide a place for residents to socialize and attend entertainment events. The nearest backyard was measured at approximately 160 feet from the amphitheater and the house is about 205 feet. Upon request by staff, a noise study was prepared by the applicant during live entertainment. There is a 60 decibel threshold, which is the acceptable residential noise level. Based on the noise study that was conducted by the applicant, the background neighborhood noise was taken between 54 and 60 decibels. The measurements were taken on a house on the corner of Via Las Brisas and Via Rio and across the street at Via Estrella. The movie night sound level was taken between 54 and 59 decibels at those residential properties that I just mentioned. The band entertainment sound measurement was between 62 and 63 decibels at those two residential properties. Staff is aware of the potential noise impact that this project may have, so staff included conditions that would limit or avoid the potential impacts to the surrounding neighborhood residential properties. We have suggested a condition that would limit on the performance schedule, which is up to 9:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday evenings for live entertainment and 1:00 to 4:00 on Saturday and Sunday afternoons. We also have a condition that requires the applicant to provide notice to the performers of the sound limitation on this project. During the, when the sound measurements were taken by the consultant, the water feature was turned on and based on their letter to the applicant, the water feature contributed to the noise level. Basically, what happened was that the band would try to play over the noise of the water feature. So we included a condition that requires the water feature be turned off during the live band performances. There's also a condition that suggests the noise monitoring during live entertainment. This is going to be a continuous noise monitoring during live entertainment with the requirement to maintain the noise levels at 60 decibels at least at the property boundary line. When the noise level was taken, the drums were also amplified. We are also recommending that the drums not be amplified during live performances. We also have a condition that requires the applicant to comply with the city's noise ordinance. Now, the final condition that we suggest is to have a six-month review of the project for us to, in order for staff to review the noise levels for the previous six months that the live entertainment was being held. The applicant has agreed to obtain a noise meter level, noise, I'm sorry, sound monitor that can record the sound level that were taken, download it to a computer and do a Now, based on the conditions that I just outlined, staff believes that the project is consistent with, will be consistent with the noise element of the city's noise element and it will avoid the adverse impacts to surrounding properties. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of SUP 2008 70325 based on the findings and conditions identified in the staff report. And we have here Greg Smith, who is our environmental planner, and he is here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the noise element, the city's noise element. Staff is now ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Noonan has a comment?
Yeah, there's just a couple of things I wanted to suggest revising, a couple of the conditions. Specifically, Condition 14 and 16 require the noise monitor to ensure compliance with the noise, but really it's more appropriate that the applicant be required to ensure compliance. And I also added a little bit more language to Condition Number 14, so I'll just read it into the record to let you know what we're suggesting. The last sentence of Condition Number 14, we're recommending say that the sound monitor shall take noise measurements during performances and if the noise exceeds 60 decibels at any time during a performance, the monitor shall immediately notify the applicant who shall be present onsite during all performances. And the applicant shall immediately make modifications to the performance to reduce noise impacts to 60 decibels or less at the monitoring site. And then with respect to Condition Number 16, we're recommending that the applicant shall ensure that the noise from the performance is maintained in accordance with the noise ordinance. And I'm also recommending on Condition Number 17 that it include compliance, that the monitoring ports to show compliance with Conditions 14 and 16. So those are the three revisions I'm recommending.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Fisher?
Sure, I'll take it. For Ms. Noonan, when you're referring to during the performances, the applicant be onsite, so is that, what are you considering, the applicant, one of their representatives, someone they contract with?
The applicant, this is a shopping center, so they have a management association that manages, for instance, a common area. This would be no different than requiring a liaison or someone for them to appoint to be onsite during the performances, you know, to make sure that, you know, not only are they complying with the noise levels, but also to ensure that the performance is moving forward and so forth. So this would require that the applicant designate someone onsite so that if any issues do come up, the person who's monitoring or taking the measurements can go immediately to that person's, the applicant's representative.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lund?
Thank you. I think part of the question was answered in regards to the noise monitoring that is being done by a live person. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what would be the procedure if there is noise that's in excess of the requirements? What would that person do?
If the noise exceeds 60 decibels, then that person is required to tell the band or the movie operator to lower down the volume.
Great. Couple of final things. The wording in restriction Number 10, where it talks about Friday or Saturday in the evenings, or Saturday or Sunday in the afternoons, or was a very carefully chosen word, it doesn't mean that they have to curb, but it's permissive that they occur in those times, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then the last thing, under restrictions of Number 12, I am a, I like to refer to myself as a several-year temporarily retired drummer, and one of the, I think that if anything is amplified or with a microphone at all, then the last three words of that sentence, it probably would not be able to comply with the ordinance because the drums do pick up amplification from other amplified sources. So my recommendation where there would be is to maybe, knowing the spirit of what you were putting here about no amplification, is just to end the sentence at amplified. That would be a comment here. Is that what you're trying to, you want no additional amplification other than natural sound from the drum set?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, Mr. Chua, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Other than the sign that's on the property, were there letters that were sent out to the neighbors surrounding this, that the people who'd be most affected, making them aware of this application?
Yes, there was a notification that went out 14 days before the hearing date.
And then, letters that we received back, the total, I just want you to repeat, what's the total number of letters we received back?
We, let me double check that real quick because I don't have it on top of my head, but I received two letters of support and at least, let's see. Okay, we received two letters of support, two letters in opposition and a petition signed by 20 individuals. However, we also received one today. So that's three letters of opposition, one petition signed by 20 residents and two letters in support.
Okay. And do we have a copy of that petition?
Yes, it's in the staff report.
Thank you.
That it was a separate supplement that was sent, the petition.
I don't have a copy of it.
Do you want me to pass mine down? It was in the exhibit, the separate exhibit that was sent with our.
Sorry.
And I think two of those letters were from the same person, weren't they?
Uh, yes.
And also, not all the signatures on the petitions were from surrounding homeowners, correct?
Um, yes.
They were from other people within Newbury Park, too.
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Grumney, are you finished with your questions to staff?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. Commissioner Adam, do you have questions?
Hello, Ms. Chua. On the movie nights, do they start a little bit earlier in the winter because of the early darkness?
Yes, they intend to start earlier on darker days and later on summer because of the daylights.
Okay. So therefore, they finish earlier as well?
Yes.
In the winter. Okay. I just wanted to know that. So you're proposing that a sound monitor would be posted at the corner of Via Rio and Via Las Brisas. By my calculation, there'd be potentially 18 movie showings a year and about potentially 100 band performances. Would this sound monitor be there for all those performances in perpetuity?
Yes, that is part of the condition of approval for the special use permit.
Is that practical?
It's part of our job to, you know, ensure that our noise ordinance and noise elements are being complied with. So whether it's not practical for them or not, I mean.
Okay. All right. And in the enclosed sound study, the folks there suggested that the band would generate decibels of 66 and 62, which are over the max of 60. And then if the fountain was turned off and the drums were not amplified, you'd drop it by maybe one decibel to 65 and 61. Of course, we got to get below 60, but as I understand from the reading, we've never really, this has never been tested to see if it actually does go below 60, is it?
Yes, it's never been tested. That's why we have this Condition Number 17 that requires a six-month review period to make sure that all the conditions of these permits are being adhered with and we are in compliance with the noise element and the noise ordinance.
Are you thinking that it will go below 60? I mean, for example, would you require that none of the instruments be amplified? Maybe they'd all be acoustic?
Um, that's, at this point, I mean, we have not made any test on what could reduce, what could actually reduce the sound, but it was strictly, it was mentioned in the noise study that the drum was probably the biggest concern. So if we find that the noise level still exceeds 60 decibels, then we will ask them to reduce amplification on other instruments. Electric guitar may be, you know, electric guitar may have to be, is required to be amplified. So we're just going to have to ask them to reduce the volume of those as practical.
Okay. The reason I ask, like I said, it's never been tested, and there's nothing in the reading that tells me that we could get below 60, even if we wanted to, even if we turned off the fountain and didn't amplify the drums. That only suggests that we would drop a decibel to 65 and 61 and we'd still be over. So we're just kind of experimenting here then?
Okay. I would defer that question to Mr. Greg Smith, who's our environmental planner.
Rively, Mr. Town wanted to make a comment. Mr. Smith?
Just also briefly, yes, I mean, the measurements that have been taken to date during live band performances were 62 to 66 decibels. The applicant is being basically required by this condition from this point forward to reduce those noise levels to 60 decibels, which is the appropriate level under our noise element for normally acceptable noise levels in residential areas. How they do that is really the burden that's placed upon them. They have accepted this condition, as they have accepted all these conditions, so they're aware of it. It's not something that is a surprise, but a basic part of it is simply that they will have to, as Mr. Chua mentioned, perhaps deamplify certain instruments or lower the overall volume.
Well, I'm just trying to ascertain if it's attainable. So what you're telling me is the onus is on the applicant and he has to attain it or else it doesn't work.
That is correct. And perhaps Mr. Smith would like to add to that, but that's the bottom line.
Actually, we've actually looked at the reports and methodology and how the sound levels were taken. There are provisions in the noise element that can attribute the change in the ambient sound level if you know what the background ambient noise level is going to be, and if you know what the noise level at the perimeter of the property is going to be, you can double the distance, the distance between the source of the sound and the sound measurement. And if you double that distance, you can determine what the sound level at the closest residence would be. We've determined that there would be a 6 dB reduction in sound level measured from the edge of the property and the source of the noise to the closest residence. There's also a factor when you add two noise levels together, that you add a certain incremental level of additional sound onto that level. And what we've done is we've calculated that and we're reasonably confident, given the state of the art of the noise measurement and the methodology for computing sound levels, that we would be well within the acceptable range for a residential land use. So that's kind of a simplified description of the conditions, but we, this is not, this is not something that is left to assume. We can, we can say with fairly good confidence that the sound level at these adjoining homes will be well below 60 dB. Okay. Let me just ask you about the movies real quick. So the ordinance says that after 9 o'clock, you're not supposed to be able to hear anything more than 50 feet away. And the movies came out, they're going to be past 9 o'clock, and from 200 feet away, they were at 54 and 59 decibels. So how low do you have, I mean, is it possible to turn the movies down so low that you can only hear them from 50 feet away and no further? I think what's important here is to realize that there's an ambient noise condition out in this area. You have Dos Vientos. You have Dos Vientos Parkway, you have the intersection of two streets. The sound levels out there that have been measured by the noise consultant are relatively, they fall within the general parameters of a reasonably noisy urban environment. You're not gonna be able to get down too low, in fact, you can't go below the ambient condition. When you're adding additional noise to it, we can make some general assumptions of what the noise levels are gonna be, but I think the condition as it's written, which requires that there cannot be any increase in noise level above sixty dB, sixty dB at the property boundary will give, is the assurance that you need, or the planning commission needs to be sure that you're not gonna be creating a condition that would be unacceptable across the street. It's as simple as that. The language of the condition goes along with the assumption that the sound levels cannot exceed sixty dB at the edge of the property. Well, the movie condition's a little different, though, because that goes past nine, and that says that you, since it's past nine o'clock, you won't be able to hear it for anything more than fifty feet away. So we can, we can attain that? I believe we can, yes. All right. Given the ambient conditions that are present on site. Okay, and just a quick question, one of the letters, it mentioned that the bands are playing past nine o'clock. Have we had any experience that that's been happening?
I know that there were, there was a complaint with the code compliance, and I don't have the exact information on exactly what the nature of the complaint was, but if they're playing beyond ten PM, the, they have their own set of conditions when they were approved for a temporary use permit. So if the, I think that they have a ten PM limit for, let me, let me-
Well, it's nine PM for the bands, and one of the letters asserts that they're playing past nine PM. Anyway, we would take-
It's nine PM, but, you know, like I said, I don't have the exact nature of the complaint with, you know, code compliance via-
Okay, and then we, just, we got a supplemental letter here stating that a gentleman took decibel readings at his home, and he came up with a hundred and eight ninety-two. If I can respond to that- Would you please? This gentleman may be in the audience and can provide some additional testimony. I called a couple of the noise consultants to do work for the city on a routine basis and went over the contents of this letter. I was surprised by the high readings. It's not sure, none of our consultants could determine how the, the noise monitor was calibrated or how it was used, but these sound levels are so high that we haven't experienced anything in a city like this. I'm not calling into question this particular letter, only from the standpoint that all of our consultants were surprised by these extremely high levels, and if they were, in fact, this loud, the source of noise would have to be inside the home. This is the general conclusion of both of the consultants. We simply don't have noise levels in this area even associated with entertainment that would reach this level at this distance, so we're, we just simply can't explain those high levels. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and Mr. Chu, I have a question. We're talking about bands and we're talking about movies, what about a vocalist?
A vocalist would be considered as part of the live entertainment.
Part of the band, and wouldn't those dB levels be high?
Maybe, maybe Mr. Smith could answer these questions?
Well, the information that we have are based upon these LEQ modeling measurements that were done specifically for the bands that were playing at the restaurant, and as it was indicated in those reports, this kind of modeling takes into consideration the absolute highest sound levels that are monitored and over very brief periods of time, and they did a pretty good job of providing an assessment of the maximum sound levels on site. In fact, I, I was the one that spoke to the gentleman that prepared this noise study and basically supervised the scope of work. So we feel that the noise study is, they did a very good job on monitoring those levels. Again, the LEQ measurement is, is the most desirable way to characterize what sound levels are from those performances, so I would, I have a high level of confidence that this is an accurate reflection, and vocalists, you know, this is not the opera, certainly, they have a much higher octave range, but generally speaking, this seems to be consistent with other kinds of noise assessments that we've seen.
Okay, and of course, with my age, when I think of band, I think a lot different than what the kids today listen to, so what type of music is it that the bands will be playing?
The applicant stated that it would be a cover band, a cover music, so just about anything, and maybe the applicant could explain that better.
Okay, I'll ask when they come forward. And, oh, there was one, oh, when the movies, I was concerned when I saw the time ending at ten, because I know during the summers such as fireworks starting, they don't start till nine o'clock on Fireworks Hill, and I was curious, with the movies starting late, will they absolutely end at ten o'clock?
Well, if they don't play a movie like The Lord of the Rings, which lasts three hours, hopefully they don't, I mean, their anticipated, their anticipated play times between, you know, one and a half to two hours, and most movies, especially kids' movies, don't last that long.
That's what I thought, these are more children's movies. I saw the sign with Polar Express, and I just happened to watch that the other day with my grandchildren, and it wasn't real long, so I assumed they were probably shorter movies then, for that. And where is the screen when you walk out there? I was kind of curious about that. Maybe that's something I'll ask the applicant, where the screen is then. Okay, any other questions, the staff? Commissioner Adam?
Just one more quick question on condition seven, revocation or modification of permit. So we're gonna start this system that hasn't been tested yet in reality, in the real world, and the goal is to keep it sixty decibels or below. Isn't this gonna be kind of a catch-22, isn't it kind of inevitable that we're gonna spike above sixty when we get started and try to get this thing smoothed out, and then wouldn't we be breaching condition seven?
This is just a standard notice condition. We put this in a lot, in, I think, all of our live entertainment permits, but we, this is a very standard condition, basically to put the applicant on notice that if we do have verified complaints of noise issues that are not resolved, we may revoke their permit, but it's an entire proceeding that we'd have to go through to revoke the permit.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and before I start the public hearing cards, I wanted to ask the commissioners if any of them had a discussion with anyone regarding this project. Now is the time to state if you talked to anyone. Okay, then, there are no more questions, the staff. I'll open the hearing for this applicant, is Jean Demato. If you come forward, state your name and city residence, and you do have fifteen minutes with a five-minute rebuttal afterwards. Good evening.
Thank you. Chair Reynolds, members of the commission, my name is Jeanne Demato. I reside in Canoga Park, and I represent the applicant, Miller Brothers DVR Town Center, LLC. On behalf of the Miller Family Company, I'd like to thank the commission for your time this evening. I'd also like to thank staff for the time and effort that you have dedicated towards this application. With staff's recommendation, we've made enormous efforts to be a good neighbor and coexist with the surrounding neighborhoods at Dos Vientos Ranch. We have diligently worked with staff to provide mitigation to solve the problems of sound. This center is a common benefit to the community at Dos Vientos Ranch and was, and was planned and built to be the gathering place for residents. Part of the planning and design of this center is the Central Amphitheater, which was always anticipated to be the entertainment hub of the center. We're asking for your approval of this application so that we can continue to provide the community with what they have been asking for, which is a place to bring their families to shop and dine and enjoy great entertainment within walking distance of their homes. I'm gonna keep it brief in lieu of everybody's time, so I thank you for your time, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, you heard the city attorney talk about some additional clarifications, you agree with that?
I'm sorry, what is, what was the question?
The city attorney had brought up some additional clarifications to the conditions, do you agree with those?
Yes, yes, I do, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Grady?
Hi, Mrs. Demato, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds had mentioned, and I thought maybe you could explain a little bit more, what type of music, what are you envisioning as the, as the type of entertainment that's going to be there?
And I did hear that, and I, it's interesting because I'm older as well, and I was asked that question, and it certainly isn't music that really caters to the young crowd, it is considered cover, a cover band, they play what we used to refer to as top forty, it's pop, it's, it's anything from The Beatles all the way through eighties, nineties. It isn't metal, heavy metal, it isn't those types of instruments. It's really, it's really for, to cater to this community, and we do require the bands when we're, when, in their contract, to adhere to the noise conditions of the city, and based on the outcome of this hearing, we will further require them. They can also modify the output of sound from their band with their amplifiers. So when those noise studies were taken, it was just let the band play, fountains were on, everything was happening, and the noise consultants took measurements at various areas which are reflected in the noise study. So in answer, more clarity for Commissioner Adams' questions, is that there are ways to further mitigate those sounds by asking the band to simply turn it down.
I mean, are we talking about five people in a band, four people in the band, or ten people in a band?
No, usually, no more than four.
Okay, no more than four.
It's usually your drummer, your lead guitar, your bass guitar, sometimes keyboard, one or two of them might be singers, so it's a variation, and they're the same group of bands that play, The Commons and The Promenade, and they, they're the same exact circle, we use the same people to hire them, so.
What about the kids' club? Because I know that I don't see anything in here. Is the kids' club, is that using any amplified sound? That's, that's a during-the-day-
The kids' club is over. The kids' club is only for a certain number of months, it's usually in the summertime, so the kids' club is every, I think it was every Tuesday for half an hour, and it was, the entertainer was amplified. She had a small little, a small little speaker, and that was so all the kids could hear her as they're spread out on the lawn, so that is, that is amplified sound.
Okay, now, on the, on the movie nights, what, what type of, I mean, who are you really gearing that towards? I mean, are you, is that going to be like an adult movies, or?
No, no, we go through a whole list of movies, they're all children's movies, and when I say children, let's see, I think the, maybe the oldest age range was Transformers was a movie, and that's actually the night we measured the sound because it was the loudest movie, and it had the loudest action scenes, and we wanted to get the decibel readings for that movie. So no, it's meant for families with children, most of the kids are young, toddlers even, so we, when we look through our list of movies, we try and hear movies to where they're not so children that, you know, the parents can hardly stand to come out and watch them, but it's aged, it's probably toddler to maybe eight, nine, ten years old.
So have you had a movie night already?
We've, all last summer. We had, we did, and it was later than normal. It was September, and it breached a little bit into October, and it was because we didn't have the approval to get it done in the earlier months and weren't set up for it, but typically it would just be July and August, and those will be every week, and that's where the summer's better, the kids are out of school. We asked for permission to hold them once a month in the off month, September through June. The likelihood of doing that is not likely. We, we wanted the ability, if we wanted a special event or a promotion like the Polar Express, we could do that, but the likelihood is that we do not intend to plan or program monthly movie nights. It's really a big summer event, we, we had a tremendous response, three to four hundred families, or people, I should say, come out-
Came out.
In the summer, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And who would you have on staff to receive complaints or concerns to the, from the residents?
Well, we have, we have a property management company who is on site, they are not there round the clock, obviously, they're there from roughly nine to four on site, then we have security, that's there twenty-four, seven. Security has a direct line to us as the owners and also the property management company, so we, are you, in reference to the monitoring or any complaints or-
Well, what I'm looking at, and I guess what comes to mind, is that we had a situation that had, that happened with Cal Lutheran, and we identified that there was nobody there for any residents to complain to, so they could bring it to an immediate attention. So I'm asking whether or not you are going to have some form of management there that if a resident was, you know, the levels were above that-
Mm-hmm.
That they can go to.
There will be a representative on site that would, that would represent the owners, and-
During all the hours of operations of the, okay.
Yeah, and now that representative may be a person that's on staff with the management company, which might be security. Security wears many hats out there for us because it is such a small center, and they liaison for us, but they have a direct line to the management company, and my property manager actually lives in the community, and she's very ingrained in the community and there all the time, so we will make sure that there is a representative there that can respond immediately.
Okay, would you be opposed if it turned out that we would grant this, however, the movie nights during the months of September through June, not have that during the week as a form of compromise? Would that be a possibility?
Not conduct the movies during the week?
On Thursday nights during September? That still allows you to be able to use a special use permit to be able to, you know, Christmas time, do a Polar Express?
Will that, you mean a special events permit? Right, right. Well, the reason that we, you know, we wanted to try and get past having to apply and apply every time, you know, which we do, and we do it, we need it for the community, but the reason that we chose Thursday nights is because it also brings people to the center, especially on your nights where there isn't a lot going on. You know, we had been asked, why don't you do movie nights on Friday night? Well, Friday nights are really for, you know, live entertainment, the restaurants are more full, there's people in the center, it wasn't practical. Typically, we, we model our programming around and, and those types of events around slower nights to bring merchants to the center, merchants to bring residents to the center to shop and to patronize our center, which is our, our number one priority is to, is the success of the center so it can remain in the community. And we're very, very concerned about that.
That's all my questions.
Commissioner Adam?
Hi, how are you this evening?
Fine, thank you.
So this, from what Commissioner O'Grady was asking, then the security guard could very well be the rep for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, how about the sound monitor? Is that gonna be, that'll be another individual, then?
No, it could be the same person. So we would train this person to operate the dB meter. There's typically, depending on the weekends, we have more than one security officer on the site. So for movie nights, it's different because we actually have an operator, we have a company that comes in, runs the movie for us, runs the projector, she actually sits there at the, at the projector, at the console, and adjusts the sound and makes sure the movie's running, and she runs the whole event, which starts a little bit before we put the movie on, we have raffles and make sure everybody's there and all of that. So for movie nights, we would have a couple of people there, but we're primarily going to rely on our security personnel, who's constantly walking the center, who's very in touch with people that are there. If anybody comes, you know, across the street and there's an issue, they're gonna seek out security, who's always gonna be present, so we would make sure that it would be their responsibility.
All right, that was, that's what I was getting at, so then you'd teach an individual how to work the sound-
Absolutely.
And he'd cross the street there and-
Take me your readings.
Proceed to take the readings, okay.
Take the readings on one side, on the other, walk across the- Take the readings on one side, on the other, walk across the street, because they're constantly roving. If they go across the street and there's a reading that exceeds the allowed, then they'll come right back in and talk to the band, talk to the movie operator, do whatever, and they're fully aware of it right now. The same people have been out there, we have a great security team, they're very vested in our center and very familiar with it.
And you have, you have had movie nights.
Mm-hmm.
So have you been complying with the noise ordinance that says that from, let's see, nine o'clock on, the sound can't travel more than 50 feet from the...
We haven't had movie nights since then. We haven't had movie nights since, since these conditions, since I've been working with staff.
Yeah, no, I understand, but when you had the movie nights, were you aware of that ordinance?
No.
That sound couldn't travel 50 feet past nine P.M.?
No.
But you're aware of it now, right?
Oh, yeah. Trust me, we're aware.
Okay.
And we're very sensitive to our neighbors. We, the last thing we want is to have people disgruntled and coming over. We want them to either, if they don't want to participate, they can shut it out, and if they do, they can come over and enjoy and participate, so we're, we fully intend on complying.
It would seem to me at nine o'clock, then the movie operator's going to have to turn it down.
Well, and, and, yes, and there's, there's some times where the movie, you know, we try to start it as early as we can, but summertime at eight o'clock, you have the movie on, you can hardly see it on the screen. So with the little kids, it's not that big a deal because they all know those movies cold anyway, but to make it enjoyable, you know, we try and we get it started, and by the time it gets going and the sun goes down, it's more visible, and most of the time, it's done prior to 10 o'clock, and we will, we'll take those readings and we'll see. To answer your question too, that I don't think that we would have to turn it down to where you couldn't hear it at all, because most of the guests sit on the lawn area, which is 15 feet from the screen, or 20 feet, so they're not, they're really, the reality is, they're not sitting way back in the, you know, past the play area. We hope one day that there'll be that many people that we can accommodate them all in the lawn area, but the reality is, is they're so close that I don't think it's going to be a problem at all.
All right, well, you've got a 50-foot leeway, so if the kids are sitting within 15, 20 feet of the screen, you should, it should be well within the leeway.
Right, right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Where do you put the screen?
The screen is built-in, and it's, if you're out in the courtyard area facing the building where Paris O'Dellie is, right there, the screen is directly above on the second floor under the eaves, and it's built into a big square box. It's about 20 feet wide by 10 feet long, and it drops down remotely.
Okay, so people are really sitting then with their backs to the street and they're facing the building then?
They're facing the building.
That's what they're doing.
Mm-hmm.
You said that you had 300 to 400 families? How could you accommodate them in that area?
Well, I should say children, people, bodies.
Oh, but you can accommodate that many people?
We can, and when we designed that amphitheater area, it was with the intent of entertaining, so with the movies, with the live music, we, our architect, who did an amazing job, planned it out, so there was a lot of grass area behind the play area, there's seat walls everywhere, there's benches, so with, you know, some obstruction from some of the trees now and some of the architecture, you can sit within a big radius of that screen and see the movie.
Do you find that a lot of people walk to it rather than driving and parking in the lot?
They do.
So they're not going to be parking on the side streets or in front of the residents?
They can't park on the side streets.
Right.
The only parking is in the parking lot.
Right, okay.
So we find it's interesting, when we had our very first movie, especially in the summertime, a lot of, a lot of families walk, a lot of strollers, because it's so nice out. They walk where they can, otherwise they, there's plenty of parking in the lot and also all around the YMCA.
I know that the different times that I've been there to go to one of the restaurants, that there's music that plays outside.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what level, does the level that's at now?
Hmm.
Because it seems a lot louder than a lot of music, but yet it's very pleasant to walk around there with that music.
There's ambient sound, we have a sound system built into the center, we call them little rock speakers that are in the landscaping, and they're speakers up in the eaves. We occasionally adjust that sound because we're on Sirius Satellite, and right now, we've just shifted to holiday music, and I was out there this morning, and it was louder than the typical music, so we get right in there and adjust it. I don't know if the decibel readings that were done in our report included that ambient music. It may have, I would have to look, but I don't know what the readings are.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Grammey, did you have another question?
Did you do any outreach to the surrounding neighborhood? Send them letters or notifications or anything in regards to what your intent was to do for the center?
Not recently, and not specifically, I think over the years, you know, as we were under construction and building the center, we communicated with the community. I think that most people knew it was coming. You know, a lot of the communication we got was when, you know, when, when is it coming? Everybody was very anxious for it to be constructed and completed. So we, we have really communicated through our website, through all our typical marketing tools. We've not directly sent letters. I actually think that the Millers sent a letter to the community some time back, and I'd have to go back and see, we have so much, especially now.
Did you do a presentation to the homeowners' association?
Oh, I did, yes, thank you. I couldn't remember, I did, I did a presentation to the HOA.
Okay.
To the master association.
Okay, thank you.
Your memory's better than mine.
Any other questions, Speaker? Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Next speaker is Mr. Tom Lynch. If you come forward, state your name and city residence, and because of the number of cards, you will have four minutes.
Well, thank you, Chair Reynolds and members of the commission. I am the author of several letters that you have received, both with the staff report as well as the supplemental one that was submitted, and I expect that you might have had an opportunity to read it before the meeting tonight. I live directly across the street from the center. I'm on the other corner of Villarreal and Las Briesas, and so I'm probably the most directly impacted by the sound emanating from the center. This center has been using public amplification since it began in, at the beginning of the summer in June. And yes, I have taken decibel readings, and because I thought you might have a question regarding decibel readings, I brought the actual sound monitor here with me this evening. It had been calibrated both before and after the sound readings were taken, and the information that's provided in your staff report is erroneous. This is a sound meter that's frequently used by most code enforcement communities in Southern California. It's digital, it reads both A and C, and the readings that were taken were at my property line and within my home. I would invite any members of the commission to come over to my patio during times of performance, and you can listen to the impacts that the bands have on the immediate neighborhood. I was a little disgruntled when I read the staff report, because I have a staff report that was prepared to you on September 25, 2006, and it was prepared by Mr. Chua, and I'm going to quote from that staff report. It says, "Staff received a letter from a nearby resident expressing concern about operating hours, outdoor noise, and live entertainment. The neighbor suggested that operating hours be limited, and that staff has added a condition prohibiting live entertainment or any outdoor speakers or public address system." And obviously, the applicant has been in violation of that condition. That goes back, and I have copies of that if you care to read it. The, I guess I want to be somewhat careful with my time, but it disturbs me that staff's recommendation to you this evening is opposite of what it was back in September 2006. And Mr. Adams, I think, asked some very good questions a little bit earlier as I was listening. He calculated that there might be as many as 150 events out there a year, and when you add in the children's program, that may be boosted up to 170. And I would ask the commission, if they would like to live adjacent to amplified sound for roughly half the year. It is terribly disruptive. When you go out and listen to these bands, you can hear it a half a mile away, and again, it picks up in the sound meter. So again, I'd invite you out to listen to it. It has driven us from our home. I have had to move into a hotel on certain nights because the sound actually rocks the panes in my window, and so again, I would invite you out so that you could verify that for yourself. I guess that's my time.
Your time is up. Are there questions of the speaker? Commissioner Adam?
Good evening, sir. Are you, do you, have a sound background?
I do.
I'm sure you have a sound background, but do you have a background in sound?
I do have a background in sound. I've been a former director of community development in Riverside County, San Bernardino County, and I've held similar positions in maybe five other cities in California, and I deal with sound intrusion into a community on a regular basis.
Why do you think there'd be such a disparity between your readings and the readings that we were given in the staff report?
Well, I don't know, the particular nights that were perhaps taken when the staff report was prepared could have been different nights than the ones I have. The nights I tested were in June and July and early August. I note in the staff report that it was later August, and they may have toned it down a bit, but again, I welcome you to come out, turn on a sound meter, bring your own, you can use mine, I can produce the calibration for it.
Well, what was going on when you took your sound readings? Was it the band?
The band. The band is the loudest. The movies are less noisy than the bands, and the bands really vary. As the applicant indicated, it's a variety of music, although I think every band has played Brown Eyed Girl by Van Morrison, so it didn't matter what band was playing, but it's consistent.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Commissioner Lund, did you have a question as a speaker?
Yes, good evening, sir, thanks for coming down. When did you buy your home?
In 2000.
Okay, and was the center completely constructed at that time?
No, the center wasn't anything constructed at all, it was totally vacant, not even graded at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner?
Hi, Mr. Lynch, thank you for coming down and taking the time to testify, and I was curious, have you ever used that sound meter in regards to the elementary school?
I haven't used it with regard to the elementary school that's in proximity to my home, but I have used them in proximity to elementary schools.
I just was curious whether or not you were registering any sound from the elementary school.
No, the times that I've used this were all nighttime performances, none during the day.
Okay, okay.
And the band activity typically doesn't begin until evening hours.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you.
Mr. John Wellerbrand, if you come forward, state your name and city residence, and you have four minutes.
John Wellerbrand? I live at 4823 Villa Camino, that's the block above Las Briesas, on the corner, looking down into the area. This is a residential community. The, Mrs. Reynolds, it sounds like you've been up to the area. It's a relatively small area in there with the restaurants and things. I invite the rest of you to come up and just drive by at any time and just see the size of it. Our backyard faces the area down there where the music comes from, and it's impossible to come out, barbecue, and sit and enjoy our backyard. In fact, we have to come in, close our windows because of the noise. And I don't know about the sound readings, the 150 and 190 sounds a lot better than the 60 or 66, and I have no idea how you relate to that, but the sound where we are is horrendous. The amplification is not necessary. The number of people down there enjoying the music really don't need any amplification whatsoever. It's a small area, you could do just a small little combo without any amplification or any speakers, and it would be sufficient. The movie nights on Thursday nights, I'm a retired school teacher. I teach a couple of things at Sycamore Canyon Elementary during their lunchtime for the elementary students. Thursday night is a terrible night to have movies for kids. They have homework, they should be in bed early enough to go to school the next day. Ridiculous idea. I would recommend that you maybe table this or put it off, and take a drive up there and just see the area, but that type of sound just says, you can't use your backyard, you can't use your house. And during the summer, it's very nice to sit out and just enjoy. And if maybe on a Saturday evening I wanted to watch a Kings hockey game on TV out in the backyard, impossible. So I would like you to consider that, it is a small area. The original, you asked the question, Mr. Lund, you asked the question of the other gentleman about whether, how long this center has been there. We had two different times where we invited to meet the merchants, and when was the big question. I don't remember the exact plans for it, but as I recall, the original plans were to have this area inside, whoops, with the different businesses around it, kind of shelter from the noise coming out. Sycamore Canyon runs some movie nights during the school year, and I don't think you have any complaints about those. Any questions?
Any questions of the speaker? None that I can see, but I do want you to know that I'm sure that each of the commissioners have been out to this area. That's one of our duties that we all do, and we each spend a lot of time out at the projects checking things out, so I'm sure that each of the commissioners have been out and have seen the project.
Yeah, it's not a very large area.
Pardon?
It's not a very large area.
No.
For people to come down and enjoy music. There can't be too many people down there, and you really don't need that kind of sound, quite frankly. If I went down there and they were playing that music, I wouldn't be too loud to sit there and listen to it.
Okay, thank you.
I'd have to back up and sit in my backyard.
Thank you very much for coming down. The next speaker is Laura Papenthus. If you come forward, state your name and city residence, please, and you have four minutes.
Thank you. My name is Laura Papenthus, I'm the owner of Mamarida's Authentic Mexican Cantina located in the center. I'm a resident of Newberry Park, and I just wanted to comment on what we're asking for at the center, being one of the tenants in there. The entertainment that the landlord puts on for the center is wonderful, and for me, being a brand-new business, and it really helps stimulate people coming out and shopping in the center and patronizing my restaurant, which is very difficult to do in these economic times. And on top of that, in this time, it's a good reason to get families out, something that doesn't cost them any money, and they can come out and sit and enjoy some entertainment that's being put on for them free of charge, and again, it does stimulate Mamarida's, they're able to sit on my patio, have a meal, and enjoy the music that's in the central promenade area, just as they do at the lakes and at the promenade, it's very nice and it brings families together. And it's nice, because when the movie night's going, the parents will sit on the patio, and like you had said, many of them do walk to the center, and then they'll sit and enjoy some margaritas, and the kids will sit out on the grass and watch the movie, and the parents love it, and it's really a wonderful time. I do invite you all to come out, because it's great for the family. And again, it really does help us as merchants right now to get a... And again, it really does help us as merchants right now to get a reason for people to come out and enjoy, and also to patronize our businesses and help everybody. So that's it. Any questions?
Any questions, Speaker? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is G., Ready? If you come forward, state your name and city residence, please. Good evening.
Hi, my name is G. Provacoretti, and I am a resident of 4687 Caia Norte, which is across the street from the shopping center across on Via Rio. And I'd like to thank the council members for allowing me to speak and be heard. I am coming here basically to let you know that I am really concerned about the noise level, as was basically the general topic of discussion most of this evening. I oppose to some of the proposed entertainment, and what I'm sort of, what I'm going to stand here and ask for is that the proposal be amended or changed and not possibly nixed completely because of the noise concern as well as the concern that it adversely impacts school-going children. So I'm asking that Thursday nights, the movie nights, the total allowances even once per month be strongly reconsidered and may be only allowed on Thursdays prior to a holiday weekend, such as Thanksgiving, Christmas, maybe spring break. Also, I'm concerned that the noise after we leave here and if this permit is granted, the noise is not going to be policed. Residents will be upset. The security guard will probably not be visible. He may be physically on the premises, but he will not be readily accessible. So I'm asking that serious consideration be given to policing likely resident complaints and policing the conditions that the permit would state that in fact those conditions are met. And also, so just generally, consideration of the adverse impact on the community during the school year. And I won't even, well, 10:00 PM is in violation of the Article 11 of the Chapter 2 of Division 6 of the Ventura County Ordinance, but I'm not going to say anything about that as long as if during the summertime, I think we'd be willing to accommodate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Grumney has a question.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Real good, thank you. A couple of questions. Did you experience noise issues when they were doing it prior, during the summer months?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I meant to speak to that. So while they were under temporary permit, the noise was clearly excessive. As you heard, they were not even aware of the ordinance up until the complaints arrived, which is evidence to the fact that they had no reason to control the noise levels. As the other two gentlemen spoke, it was very, very loud. We could hear it echoing from the walls of the home across the street in our neighborhood and coming back. And as I had mentioned, we could definitely hear it from within the house while the windows were closed. And I am well beyond the 50-foot distance that this noise is permitted. So I will clearly support that they were well in violation during the times of the temporary permit, and that's why I urge you to strongly reconsider the noise issue and the police intervention.
Mr. Lynch, I could see where his home is. It's right there on the corner. Where would you be in proximity to Mr. Lynch?
I am the fourth house down, going down the road on Via Rio.
So you're on the side where your backyard would be backing to Via Rio?
The wall backing to Via Rio, yes.
Okay. And would you feel more comfortable if there was a phone number or something that's given to you so you had direct access in which if it was getting too loud that you could communicate with someone?
Yeah, that would definitely make us feel a little bit more at comfort in that the immediate residents, myself included, could actually take some action or have something assessed immediately so that the high noise level and our ability to enjoy our own privacy is still maintained to some degree.
Okay.
The other aspect that the loud noise has begun to attract, while it's bringing patrons, and I do support patronage to the local stores and the restaurants, it's also bringing what I would label as undesirable factions after hours on Fridays and Saturdays to that area, and particularly teenagers hanging out there. And, you know, I don't need to go into the finer nuances of what may happen there stemming from vandalism, possible graffiti, and other minor crime.
Okay.
So that's also a concern.
But I would think their security would take care of that, too. Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Fahad Nayeri. Come forward, state your name and city residence, please.
Good evening. My name is Fahid Nayeri. I live on 446 Via Gregorio, across from the community center. Thank you for the time that you have given me tonight. I wrote a letter to Mr. Chua expressing strongest opposition that I could have with this project. I concur with these three gentlemen that spoke. I don't know where these readings are coming from, 60 decibels. And this gentleman is indicating that, you know, 66 is going to be well below the 60 supposedly that it's supposed to be for the reason that it's going to be in the city ordinance guidelines, basically. But this has been well beyond that. And for a project with this magnitude, I was hoping that we would get more than two weeks of notification so at least we can talk to, if we can get signatures of other folks that what they're feeling, whether, you know, in two weeks during December time, it's not a good time to ask people to come here. And I'm surprised, and in a positive way, that, you know, we've had at least four turnarounds coming here to talk about this because my home is my sanctuary. You know, I work, I leave home at 6:00 AM, come home 7:30. So on Thursday through Sunday, I don't want to be bothered. The reason I bought this house six years ago, over six years ago, was the fact that this is a peace and quiet neighborhood. It's residential. Unfortunately, at the time, it wasn't coming, there was supposed to be a community center, but no live entertainment. Music within the community center is fine for the shoppers, but anything beyond that, I didn't sign up for that. And hopefully for, you know, I don't have to pay for the fact that I know that it is difficult times. But I want to come home and have some quality time, one or two hours with my family. And I have to get bothered, and I'm across from the first house on Via Gregorio. So the loud noise that these gentlemen have been speaking to, it's right there. We would encourage you to come and sit there and be in our guests in our house and see what we're talking about. I don't know these measurements, where they're coming from, and who's getting, and who's these consultants are. But 60 decibels is nothing. I mean, I'm about 100 feet from them, and I can hear the loud noise. And people hear the noise and start walking, and it was a comment that people are walking to the community center. They just want to know what's going on because of the loud noise. It's attracting them. But I'm hoping that as a resident here, we don't have to pay for, you know, somebody else's desire for other things. I'm sure a lot of other people from outside the area would like to come and get entertained, but I don't want it to be at my expense. I mean, you know, I need to have my peace and quiet. Two or three hours that I'm up in the evening, I want to spend with my family. I have a sick mother at home as well. She stays home all the time, and she's been complaining during Friday, you know, concerts that, you know, before I get home, that this thing starts around 6:00 o'clock or so, and then it is, it's very loud. So my recommendation is, hopefully, we're not going to be hasty tonight by making a decision. Let's organize this a little bit better. Let's, give us another month or two. Let us talk to other residents. Let's bring signatures that, what you need for us to be able to communicate with you that what's going on in our neighborhood. And I'm hoping that you haven't made the decision already that, oh, we're going to go ahead with this because of the recommendations that you have gotten from the city planners.
Excuse me, would you please wrap up your time?
I'm wrapping up. So as far as the two points I want to make, communication, no communication was made to us from the Millers family. And the second is that if you really have to prove something tonight, I would strongly urge you to have a one-month review for this. And I would agree with having a phone number that people can call, as well as, not them, we call you as well. Somebody here can hear from residents. And any type of noise level, decibels, I'm willing to buy the equipment to measure that going forward.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the speaker? Commissioner Grumney?
I just want to clarify, is your position that you'd like to have no entertainment there whatsoever?
No, what I'm talking about is the noise level. If they can keep it within that community center, that I don't have to get bothered. As these gentlemen were talking about, you know, in the evening, you want to open the window, we cannot. There is no way you can leave the window open and not be bothered with this because it's loud.
Okay.
And if they...
So you're not opposing entertainment, you just don't want to be able to hear it from your home?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And the last speaker is Janet Rothman. If you come forward, state your name and city residence.
Good evening. My name is Janet Rothman. I live at 4675 Caia Norte. So I am a couple doors down, but I'm on a flag lot. And along with just a couple of my neighbors, we're in support of the entertainment and the movie nights because we think it's a great thing. We've wanted this for a long time, and finally, it's built, and the restaurants and everything. So we're, you know, I'm here to show my support. The only thing that I was thinking is maybe to compromise, maybe they don't have to do it every weekend, the music. Maybe it could be twice a month, because I think the residents in my area are looking for some kind of compromise. You know, as we know, the movie nights are not going to happen every month, but, and if they happen on a Saturday night, our kids can go. During the week, it's a little more difficult. So I would say I don't make most of the movie nights if they're during the week. But I'm here to show my support for, because I'm directly across the street.
So anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mrs. Rothman. And at this time, we'll go back to staff. Mr. Chua?
Yes, I'd like to address some concerns, address some issues that were brought up earlier by some speakers. First one is by Mr. Lynch regarding the live entertainment limitations that was granted, that was imposed on the restaurants. Every time we have a live alcohol, a special use permit for alcohol and beverages on a center that's adjacent to a neighborhood, to a residential property, we always impose a condition that requires then, that bars the applicant from having outdoor speakers to avoid unnecessary disturbance because of orderings and all that, or paging of customers. The fourth speaker, and I will not attempt to say his name because I don't want to offend him. I'm sorry, can't mention your name. I can't, I didn't get it quite clear. Undesirables, the live entertainment will get, will attract undesirables. This is one of the reasons why we have a condition that requires, that has the title It's condition number 13, and it states that during and after movie nights and live performances, the applicant shall post security personnel within the shopping complex to prevent loitering and unnecessary disturbances to surrounding residents. So I just want to point out that we've anticipated that that may happen, and we have a condition in place for that. The next speaker is Mr. Nayeri, I think I got it right, expresses that there should have been a two weeks of, or more than two weeks of notification to gather up signatures or to organize, you know, a community, the community about regarding this project. We, on a special use permit such as this application, we post a sign at least 45 days before the hearing date, and we, at the same time that the sign is posted, we also send out a notification to the surrounding residents, and this was accomplished in October 16 of 2008. So that's well beyond 45 days as required by the municipal code. And that's all I have, and I turn it over to Mr. Smith.
All right. I really want to attempt to address these discrepancies with the noise measurements. We have, of course, we have a letter that addresses the sound levels, and I think that one of the reasons why there may be some discrepancy here to some degree is that the duration of the measurement itself, we have some very high measurements that were taken by a resident here. And just as a matter of explaining what may account for some of these differences is that you can actually record some very high sound levels and identify those high levels. But if you're using a more standardized approach, which includes these high levels of sound and averages them over the monitoring period, the sound level, of course, comes down. What concerns me here is that we have a number of individuals that are expressing concerns over the sound levels coming from this activity. And when that happens, it is a cause for some concern. And looking back at the noise tests that were done, we apparently have two measurements of the band activities on two separate occasions here. And that has been used to, by the noise consultant, to characterize the sound levels at the property lines of the closest residents to this activity. And again, you know, there's, the range of human tolerance to noise is somewhat subjective. I think most people can agree that when sound levels get to the point where they become an interference with normal speech, it's a problem. And typically, that range is about 65 dB. And what I'm hearing here is that people are having problems not being able to leave their windows open, and they feel annoyed by the sound level. So I think it is a concern. I, I'm familiar with this noise monitor that the gentleman indicated that he was using here. It's very similar to the monitor that we use for the city. I'm familiar with its use. So I'm, I think that the conditions as they are written really provide the mechanism to control sound levels on this site as per the conditions of the SUP. If it turns out that we have conditions that exceed the threshold that's been established here, this whole activity can be, in fact, reviewed. And it can be dealt with in a number of different ways. It can be dealt with through our code enforcement officers, and of course, the special use permit can be reconsidered if this activity continues to provide, or continues to be a source of annoyance. But I am, I'm at a loss here to explain the great difference in sound levels between the information that you have in your letter here and what we've measured at the site. It could be that there was a particularly loud events, or several very loud events, and that we were able to record some sound levels that were considerably lower than that. But I am somewhat concerned when I hear a number of different residents complaining of similar loud conditions. So, you know, I don't know how to explain it. So, you know, I don't know how to explain it any better than that. I think that the conditions themselves place the responsibility clearly on the shoulders of the applicant here to control sound. We've done this in other parts of the city. And most recently, we did it with California Lutheran University. And they've made a very good attempt at dealing with the neighborhood and controlling sounds. In that case, we have amplified sound. We have residents that were very close to these activities complaining bitterly about it. And I believe that program has been successful. It's a program very similar to what we're recommending in the conditions here. And again, the university was adamant that they wanted to be a good neighbor. And they have acted in good faith and have solved this problem. So I believe that even though there is an apparent discrepancy here between some of the sound measurements that have been taken, I think that the conditions themselves are adequate to control noise. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And Mr. Town?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up some of Mr. Smith's comments, staff has looked very carefully at the letters that were submitted and have listened to everybody, not only this evening, but again, in prior correspondence. And so I think it's important to recognize that when the temporary use permit was issued this summer for such activities, they didn't have, the applicant didn't have such specific restrictions and conditions on live entertainment, nor on the movies. So staff has listened to what you've been saying. These conditions were tailored specifically to respond to those concerns, to place very discreet limits on noise. On the 60 dB is consistent with what we've measured to be ambient noise in the area, or I should say, the applicant's representative. And so we really have a different situation here where we are working to try to specifically address your concerns with conditions which the applicant feels are reasonable and which we believe are feasible to reduce any type of noise impacts and to avoid, in fact, the situation that you've expressed concern about this evening. Secondly, I wanted to mention, so everybody's clear on this, condition number 11, which talks about movie showing hours. The applicant has indicated their desire to have movie evenings on Thursday nights. Condition 11 is a little bit more open-ended. It says that movie showings shall be limited to one day per month during the months of, and it goes on. So the condition as written does not limit the applicant specifically to Thursday nights. It gives them some flexibility if there is a better evening to hold a movie, to minimize noise impacts even further. So I just wanted to make it very clear for the commission that that condition is worded that way and is open-ended in terms of the specific night for movies to provide the maximum flexibility to reduce any potential noise impacts. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Linn?
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. Thank you, Mr. Town, for that explanation. We've heard so much tonight from folks. And your initial comment, or the first part of your comment, was basically telling us that what our residents are hearing have been events that have not had any restrictions on the noise level. Is that correct?
There were not specific limitations on noise levels. There were conditions to the effect that it can't cause, allows any interruptions to reasonable peace, quiet, et cetera, but not the specific decibel levels.
Not the specific decibel levels. Thank you.
Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. You know, what concerns me though is that we're operating on, and this is for Mr. Smith, we're operating on assumptions here. We're operating on the assumption, well, the fact that the independent sound person checked the decibel level, it was a 66 and 62, and then they suggested turn off the fountain, don't amplify the drums, you could drop it one decibel. But that would still be over the limit. And you're telling me, well, we're going to get it below 60, but we've never tested it. How do we know we can consistently do that? And how will we do that so it's not at the expense of the residents, this testing process?
I think it's pretty clear now. We're exercising an even more conservative way to monitor sound. Instead of monitoring the sound level on the property line across the street from this activity, we're measuring the sound level now at the edge of the property line, at the source of the sound. Now we have the added buffer of the width of the street and then the additional setback of the house and the rear yard, plus we have an existing solid masonry wall. Given those considerations, we are confident, given the attenuation of sound, given those distances, that we can achieve a sound level that is either at the ambient or slightly above the ambient condition, which would meet the intent of the condition. So it's no guesswork here. It's a simple arithmetic, if you will, in terms of what the measured sound level is going to be at the edge of the property line, where the source of the noise is coming from. And then given the distance of the closest residents, we can determine what that sound level will be. If they maintain sound levels that do not exceed 60 dB, we are confident that we can achieve the acceptable threshold for this land use.
Thank you. Just a quick question. The temporary use permit, was that an open-ended permit? Or is that given for a certain amount of time?
No, it's not. It was set at a particular...
Oh, that's right. It expired, right.
Yeah, it's expired.
Okay, it was given for six months or something, okay?
I believe it was from July until September.
Okay. That's all right. It expired. And I had a question for Council Noonan, if I may. The question is, could the planning commission extend the temporary use permit under these particular circumstances?
No, if, what's before you is the actual special use permit. That's what's before you. And if you're uncomfortable with supporting a special use permit, then you would vote to deny the special use permit. And then the applicant would have the opportunity to apply for a temporary use permit or appeal it to the city council or...
I see. Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Chua, I wanted to ask you, on condition 13 regarding the loitering and the security guard, how much time after the movie or the band plays? I mean, it just says there'll be security there. Do you anticipate an hour or two hours or...?
Well, the way it was written, it's open-ended so that, you know, we can come in and say, require the applicant to prevent loitering any time that there is, any time thereafter that there is a performance. So it's an open-ended condition. So if there's any kind of noise resulting from people that attended the noise loitering, and, you know, it's, if, like, the intent was for the applicant to bear the responsibility of keeping peace and order on their property during and after performances. This is very similar to what we do as far as loitering conditions on live entertainments or special use permits for alcohol use in restaurants. So they have the same concept. There's no time limit on when it expires, I mean, when can they do it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions to staff? Commissioner Adam?
One more, please. On condition 17 for Mr. Smith, that the six months review, so I take it after six months, we're going to kind of look back and look at any violations, et cetera. Considering what you've heard from the residents tonight is six months maybe too long? Should be three months?
I think that what we could possibly do to deal with this issue is, I can't suggest to the planning commission what the length of time that you feel a review is necessary. I think that we could, in fact, have the readout information on noise levels submitted as a report to the planning department that would allow us to see what these consecutive measurements have been. That is another piece of evidence that can be used to evaluate whether or not to provide extensions for this special use permit. But I think it would be prudent to have this information. It would be public information available to the public, available to the planning department. We can all see how this is progressing. And we can have a written record of those noise measurements. So if it would be the preference of the planning commission to include that as a part of a motion or revised condition, I think that would be appropriate. I can't suggest what the review period should be.
No, that's helpful. So in other words, the readouts would be going along concurrently versus at the end of six months, it'd be reviewed...
That's right. We can see a pattern of compliance or non-compliance. It becomes a public record.
I got you. Thank you.
Okay. No more questions to staff? Commissioner Linn?
I'm sorry to do this to you, Chair Reynolds. I'm normally more organized and can get all my questions down to one round. But with that, I'm looking through the staff report and obviously, we're not finished with the public hearing. But, and I look at condition number 17, that six-month review. And I just ask this hypothetically, which I hate that word from a dais, but hypothetically, if we were to increase or shorten that first six-month review, if we, maybe to a one and a three and a six-month review, is that feasible? In terms of workload?
If, well, my idea is to, instead of using the word "at", we can say "within" six months. So that will give us flexibility one month after, two months after, three months after. If, instead of saying "at six months", which is very definite, we could say "within six months of the use integration".
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I just wanted to comment. If the intention is to allow flexibility and have, you know, basically, an ongoing review during that six-month period, I would just recommend that we add language where we say, "During this time, applicant shall provide to the community development department records that demonstrate compliance with condition number 14 and 16 of this permit" at the staff's request. Just to make it clear that staff can continuously request that monitoring information.
Do we need to ask the applicant if that's going to be...
The applicant will be called back up. That's why I'm trying to get through your questions so I can call the applicant back up. I want you, okay. I do have one statement card that I'll pass between the commissioners. So I'll ask Mrs. Demato, if you'd come back up, state your name and city residence, and you have five-minute rebuttal.
Jeannie Demato. I reside in Canoga Park, California. I don't really have a rebuttal. I would be happy to answer questions. We've gone over so much this evening, and I'm hearing all the concerns of the residents. And I have received copies of those letters, and we are very sensitive. We, as I stated before, our desire is to be a good neighbor. I think, as Arlen Miller and Tony Miller would say, we have been good neighbors for the duration of the construction of the ranch as a whole and built this center as a positive community benefit for the neighborhood. So we are absolutely willing to comply within reason to all of these conditions. My concern about the review period, my initial concern was that, while we want to be sensitive, we don't want to have to go through a minor or major modification every time we get a, you know, a request from the city to do so. It's very timely. It costs the city a lot of money to do those reviews. And it delays us from our continued programming at the center. I think there are ways to mitigate. And I would encourage staff to, and I think with Assistant City Attorney, if we can, I've now got so many notes here, I want to see exactly how this condition 17 will read before I can agree.
With respect to it, if it's what I envision, and Mr. Chua or Mr. Town can tell me if I'm wrong, but it would be a six-month review period where at various intervals, staff can request copies of the monitoring, the noise monitoring that's going on. And if there is a pattern or issues that are occurring or we're getting complaints from the residents, we'll sit down with you and discuss those issues and those complaints. If we don't see any change, though, if there's a continuous, continual violations, at that point, that's when we would be requesting or requiring the minor modification to modify the conditions of approval. But it wouldn't be, you know, the very first instance of a violation because, again, we want this to be successful, but we want to hear what the residents are saying. So if we're getting complaints from the residents or we're seeing that the monitoring is actually showing violations, then we'll sit down with you at that point and see what you come up with to mitigate it.
So as I understand it, and I'm trying not to get into too much detail because we can certainly discuss this as we're going, but we measure the DBs, we see that they're too high, we mitigate immediately on the spot, we re-measure the DBs. All of this will be recorded. So within minutes, so many times, that's how I intend to operate the device and to train the person to operate it so that you have a clear picture on Friday night from, you know, eight to nine, or seven to eight, or whatever it was, we'll have a record of what those...
And those monitoring reports will show that. And then, based on any issues, any complaints that you receive or that the city receives, and we would look at the date that the complaints were received and what was going on.
Okay, okay.
Is that what you were thinking?
Yes, that is what I was thinking. It doesn't, the way that condition number 17 is worded is specifically to allow the community development department to have the first opportunity to review any complaints that neighbors have, to review the records, the printouts, if you will, from the sound meter. And then if, again, as Ms. Noonan mentioned, if the issues are not resolved, if we cannot work those out, then that could be referred to a minor modification application. That does not happen automatically, though. The way that this condition is worded is to give us opportunity to work out any issues that may come up.
Okay. Just one thing I might add, though. Mr. Smith touched upon the program that we impose on Cal Lutheran. I think it really was highly successful, where we actually identified a specific liaison. It was on their website with a phone number that any resident could call 24/7. And that liaison had to have the authority to make changes to whatever noise issues were. And the residents were really pleased with that program. And we've heard back from the residents since then saying how successful that program is. So I don't know if the commission is thinking about implementing that. But regardless, it is, it was really successful with Cal Lutheran. The residents really appreciated having that phone number on the website that they could contact someone who had the authority to do something about it at all times.
Okay. And we would absolutely agree to that. Posting it on our existing website, even, you know, in the HOA newsletter, however, we need to get the word out.
Did you have anything else you wanted to... Because we'd be eaten in three years' time.
No, 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 that's okay. I just wanted also to make a comment that we have security on-site 24/7. We, yes, have absolutely had an issue with teenagers on our site, especially when the center first opened. It was, it was, opened the floodgates. Now we have a place to go hang out. We've, I think, as the novelty has worn off for them, for the teenagers, and they're back in school, we have great cooperation from the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. They've actually come out and mentored some of these kids, some more troublesome ones. And we think that we have a real good handle on not only the loitering, but property damage and all of those things that come with that. But security is there before, during, and after every event, and they're there around the clock. So we haven't had really any issues of loitering. They're on top of it. And they're the same security guards, and they even personally know a lot of these kids. So we're very sensitive to that as well.
Okay, thank you for answering that. I had assumed it was 24-hour, but I wasn't too sure. Any other questions? Commissioner Adam?
So condition 17 then is going to work for you where it'll be reviewed periodically during the six-month period instead of at the end of the six-month period?
Yes. As long as that review, as Ms. Noonan said, is, you know, is, if there's complaints that come in, and we're happy to submit any readings we get as often as you require, we will make it a standard to conduct those readings during every event. They're downloaded, we'll make reports. So at your request, we can absolutely provide those to you.
Right. Do you think there's validity in the, what's been said about the conduct during the temporary use permit that perhaps the center got a little out of hand?
Absolutely. You know, I was out there when we tested the movie. The first time, we rolled the equipment out, we rolled the speakers out. We had no idea how it was going to work. We were all, you know, and it's an amazing, amazing system. And yeah, cranked up fully, you could probably hear it miles away. I mean, that's the system, that's the equipment. We had somebody sitting there, she's not a professional. She's not a sound consultant. She was lowering the sound. We had, when we were testing it, we had some neighbors come over, and we were very apologetic. We're testing it, happened for two seconds, and we communicated with them. So absolutely, I think that during that time, and in fact, Will Chua and I have had many conversations during all of that so I could become educated on the noise ordinance. I know way more than I ever wanted to know about decibels from our noise consultant to try and mitigate that. So during that TUP time, when we first... So during that TUP time, when we first launched these programs, we weren't aware of what those readings would be. I mean, it was, you know, I mean, this is a much more organized program. We're happy to comply with these conditions. We don't want angry neighbors. That's not what we want. We don't want any of these families to be bothered by our entertainment. But we need to have it. We need to have it in a way that everybody's happy. We need to provide it to our community. It's extremely important as a part of the center.
Okay. Thanks. Just wanted to hear you say that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And this time, I'll close the public hearing, and time for discussion, motion. Commissioner Lund?
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. And thanks to all the folks who came down to talk tonight on both sides of the project. One of the things, I'd like to start with some comments about this particular project and this particular area. I have been to that center, and I've frequented the center particularly since it's opened, and I like it. I've been there when it was operating on the temporary use permit for both movie nights and to have bands there. And this is what they're teaching all the planning professionals in the United States now about the types of neighborhoods that we should be looking for. People can walk from their homes, and they can go to a restaurant, they can go to a store, and they can recreate, and this is how they're planning communities these days. So this Dos Fiantos, and this particular shopping center, as it is, is the state of the art, is what's going forward now about all the planning dictates that we're studying throughout the United States today. So this is it. So we're deciding tonight on something that deals with exactly what they're teaching us at all these conferences, what all the planners are going to school for in higher education. So here it's before us. I also live in Dos Fiantos Ranch. I live on the other side. I have to travel into this center. And I was riding motorcycles and hiking where this center was and where your homes were before you moved in. And, you know, change is difficult a lot of times for us. You know, anytime you see something coming, you go, oh, gosh, what is this going to do now? I've got more noise, I've got more traffic. But when I moved in, there were three projects on that side of the hill that were coming in. The shopping center was one, a school was the other, and the development of Dos Fiantos Park. Those were three things that any homeowner that bought a home there knew were coming. Now, anytime you move close to a school, or church, a synagogue, or, you know, an airport, railroad crossing, a busy street, or a community shopping center, you're always going to have some impacts. I'm pretty confident, you know, I live across the street from Horse Ranch, and I have impacts from that. I am very competent, or confident, that the restrictions that we've placed on this plan, staff has done an outstanding job in terms of the conditions that we've placed here. And I know there's some concerns about there being a hypothetical situation about the music. I can tell you from being a musician, that once you reduce ambient sound, you can lower the sound of the instruments. I've been there, I've done that, I've watched music in that particular center. I think that when we're measuring on the property, and we're measuring at that decibel level, it isn't for us to decide whether it can be done. The onus is on the applicant, and they either have to comply, and it's very exact science. It's a dumb machine, and the gentleman, Mr. Lynch, brought that machine, I've used that machine myself. It's a dumb machine, but it's an exact science. And so they have to comply, or they're in violation, and there's sanctions and ramifications for that. So those are my comments on that. With my comments, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion to approve SUP 2008-70325, based on the findings and subject to the attached conditions in the staff report, with the additions of the number 14, 16, and 17, as noted by the city attorney, and also in addition to, or the deletion of a sentence of, in 12, the last three words of that sentence, and the end of the sentence should end with "shall not be amplified," and one additional condition, to condition the applicant to establish a phone number or place a contact for residents, so they might air their complaints similar to the Cal Lutheran project.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Lund's comments. This amplifier was already approved going forward. I do take the residents' concerns seriously. We do have a noise element, maximum of 60 dB. They've agreed to have a noise monitor now with the additional condition similar to Cal Lutheran of having a phone number. Yes, the onus is on the applicant to comply with that, and they know what happens if they don't do that. I think having a phone number is going to be key to the success of this, and having an open communication with the residents. I think this, I've been to this particular complex several times, and thoroughly enjoy it, and I think this is, you know, just an added benefit to it, although I do think there should be some restrictions, and I believe that staff has captured that in the staff report, and will support the motion.
Commissioner Grumman?
I just want to make sure that I understand the motion, Commissioner Lund. In regards to, I guess it's number 17, as far as the review, this is going to be what was discussed here, which was that for six months, there would be a review that could be on a monthly basis, where the city would ask for copies of the report to see the decimal levels, and would allow the city, if they felt that there was non-compliance, to be able to, with the right terminology, revoke their permit?
The condition would require them to file a minor modification to impose additional restrictions. It wouldn't be that their entire permit would be revoked. The way the condition is written would require them to file a minor mod, and at that point, staff would recommend, you know, maybe restricting the hours, or the times, or how many times per week or per month, things like that.
And one other addition to that, and I'm paraph----
I think Mr. Towne has his--
Go ahead, Mr. Towne. Just very quickly to reiterate, that would be after and only in the case if any issues could not be resolved at a staff level, the minor mod.
Right.
Commissioner?
Well, that was it.
Commissioner Grumman, go ahead.
Okay, okay. I think on that basis, I'm going to be able to support the motion. You know, I think that it's critical that we find a way to all cohabitate together, and that means that really, we are putting the onus on Perry Eso to truly be that good neighbor, to truly communicate out to them, to the neighbors, because you are very, very close to those neighbors around you, and to really make sure that you have someone who's easily accessible for the residents to be able to respond back to. I think that's going to be absolutely critical. And I don't understand all these decibel levels and what that actually means. I just know the bottom line is, is that if you can't go out and enjoy your property, then the noise is too high. And then we need to find someplace to be able to compromise, so that everyone's quality of life is able to have. I think the center is an extreme asset to the neighborhood. It brings people together, and that's what communities are about. So I think that it's going to be very good, and you have my support.
Richard Adam?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I think the rewrite of Condition 17 was important. You know, rather than review it at the end of the six-month, it'll be done periodically, and there'll be resident input that will be factored in. And again, I guess I have to say, Mr. Demato, it sounds like you got off on the wrong foot during this temporary use permit. But you seem to be acknowledging that. I mean, you've got some residents that are very concerned here, and I can certainly relate to that. I mean, nobody wants a lot of noise, but I'm going to take it that you're going to be very determined to adhere to these conditions, and as you say, make for good neighbors in the area. So with the scrupulous following of these conditions, I will support the motion as well.
Thank you. I had great concerns when I first saw this, only because my mother lived across the street in Woodland Hills from a park, a beautiful park, that eventually is the cultural center, or that someday they may build a building. And every Sunday, she'd come out to my house, because she couldn't stand the music, and being an older person, she was very sensitive to a lot of different types. And if she didn't come out to my house, I couldn't go in and visit, because there was never a place to park, and that's why I was concerned about the parking, how many people that it drew. But that was a horrendous noise, and I don't think any levels were ever measured there, and it's probably still going on. But I don't see this happening at all at your center. I was very pleased to hear Commissioner Lund talk about the training that we give. I sat on another planning commission for eight years, and I've been on this one four, and that's one thing we always would hear about, livable communities. They want you to have a town center, something you can walk to, to shop, for entertainment. And with your school so close, Dos Fiantos is that perfect, livable community. I just wish people would put their cars aside and bicycle. And I know that so many of us, or people go off out of the area to work, that they can't work within that community. But I really think that this will be a plus, not only for the residents, but also for the merchants there and the restaurants. I think that we all need to be good neighbors. I really believe that you're going to do that, and not only you being a good neighbor, but the community supporting those merchants in that area, too. In these times, it is very important. And so with that, I will also support the motion, and I'll be glad to come out. And I'm very curious about the sound levels, and the DBA's now being at 60. I worked for years to get the sound wall on the freeway 23, so I know what those neighbors, even with the freeway traffic, went through when it was registering in the 70s or so. So I'm glad to hear about the 60s. Final comments to your motion, Commissioner Lund?
No, thank you.
With that, then, excuse me, I'll ask you to vote.
Motion passes, 5-0.
And there is a 10-day appeal period. We'll continue on with our agenda to Item 7, which there probably are nothing, eight Community Development Directors' reports. Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just looking ahead to your schedule for 2009, believe it or not, it's right around the corner. We have at your January 12 meeting, planned reorganization, as well as the hearings that are identified on page 27 of your packet. Those include one cell site case, and also the housing element, which we have been working on for your review. Following that, on January 26th, is the tentative hearing date for Home Depot, and so that will be the only item on that evening's agenda. And then looking forward beyond that, on February 9th, we currently have several different cases planned for your review. So it's a relatively busy agenda for the first part of 2009. Also, looking somewhat backwards and forward to City Council, consideration of items. You had heard a cell site case on Kimber Drive some time ago, this is back in July. That had tentatively been planned to be heard by the City Council on December 16th. At this time, that has been continued to a date uncertain, so do not expect the council to be hearing that one in the immediate future. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes of the November 24 meeting, a motion to approve. Commissioner Lund?
So moved.
Please vote.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. AB 1234 reports, are there any? Commission comments, other than I wanted to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays? And I'm sure that we'll see commissioners, hopefully, at the State of the City speech tomorrow, and then for reorganization tomorrow evening here in council chambers. And any other comments?
I want to see you on that bike.
Pardon?
I want to see you on that bike.
Oh, on the bicycle? Oh, yes, I am, with my new knee. Anything else? Then thank you. I'll adjourn the meeting then to Monday, January 12, 2009, at 6:30. Good evening.